Okay, uh, so I'm Chucky Antonio. I am a sitting theater in barangay Kigawad of barangay Iguamarte. I was also a former SK Kigawad, so I've been in government for about roughly 10 years, more or less. And now I'm trying to run for a higher position, which is city council of Quezon City District 3. My personal life on my own, I have a few businesses that I run and own. Uh, I also just got back last August from my master's degree in Singapore. Um, so these businesses are still ongoing, but aside from that, I wanna do something that serves the people. That's why I'm running as a government official. Uh, what else? I'm very active in charity works, especially in Gawa Tilinga. I am, uh, I try to stay fit. I live a very active lifestyle. I do yoga, I do some crossfit. I like going to the gym, playing sports, basketball, especially, I used to be in the varsity team as well. Yeah, pretty much that's me. That's who I am. If you have any questions, I'd be glad, I'd be happy to answer them, so.
Your involvement in public service, when did it start?
Uh, it started when I was 15 years old in 2007. I was a SK Kigawad, so I was part of the Sanggonyan Kabataan Council of barangay Iguamarte. And then, three years later, I was 18 years old. I decided to run for barangay Kigawad, and I was the youngest barangay Kigawad of Quezon City. So now it's my third term of that position. Uh, so I've ran, and every time I ran, um, thanks God, thank to, thanks to God I won, so. So yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Who are your influences?
In terms of public service? To be honest, there's no one specific person that has been the influence when it comes to public service. Just because my parents are very private people, they're not really into government. It was just me, not my siblings, no one. In my immediate family, there's no one that's really into government service. But it's just, I guess, something that I've always wanted to do and something I've enjoyed doing, that's why. Since I'm enjoying it, tinutuloy ka siya. So, yeah.
And that's really, what are the specific causes you want to focus on?
Um, so, okay, so when I started this campaign as a city councillor, the first, the very first thing I did was visited all the 37 barangays of this district. Why did I do that? I did that because I wanted to know what the problems were. And because of that, I found out what the problems were, and now I'm making it my advocacy. So the problems are in the fields, or the main problems are in terms of health, education, and employment. So now these are the primary thrusts of my advocacy, of my campaign. And these are the problems I want to address if ever given the chance na ako po tayo sa City.
Parang pagkakaalam namin, parang naging parte doon ng showbiz before.
Well, I, I, I tried a bit of it, modeling, like it is.
Please tell something more about Star Trek, I guess, Star Circle.
Uh, Circle 10? Yeah.
Kitaan, sino ka batchmate?
Uh, this girl on TV right now, si... Beauty ba?
Beauty and sadness?
Yeah, she was my batchmate. I, I just saw her face and looked very familiar, so yeah.
Para di mo tinugay, it's not your passion?
Uh, I wouldn't say naman that it's not really my passion, it's more of... Ano, hindi mo magaling mag arte. Maybe if I tried to practice it more, I would have probably pursued it. Pero at the time, kasi I was very young, I was transitioning pa lang, papasok pa ako ng college na. So there was a lot of things on my plate. I wanted to focus a lot of my education. So, by chance lang na hindi nangyari, but it's not something na sinabian ko na ayoko na.
So pwede ka pang bumali?
May chance naman po, pero right now my focus is really this campaign, this election. Because I'm very active, actively going about my campaign, and I really want to make a difference here in Quezon City. So yun po 'yung nagiging focus ko ngayon.
But shock you entering on an early age, like, than you when? At, um, at the age of 18?
Yes.
Now that you're 26?
I'm also 26.
So how would you differentiate the kind of politics bangren and now?
Yes, um, well, I don't believe na... This new generation is technically better than the last one. My point here is, there has to be someone representing the youth when it comes to governing the people. Kumbaga, hindi masama 'yung dati, kailangan lang haluan ang makabago para they can work hand in hand to produce something better. So that's what I'm trying to represent here. I am the youngest, but I don't lack any experience. I have the experience. I would believe also that I have the, the drive, the aggression to, to make things better. Um, even if things are already good, there's still a lot of potential to make it better. So, um, I would differentiate myself by, of course, representing the youth and the programs of the youth, and adding some technology into the mix, I would say also. So yeah, that's what I represent. I'd say that's how I differentiate myself.
So what, what certain laws have you panang pursue in enacting it or?
Um, well, okay, so in this barangay?
Yes.
In this barangay where I am a theater and Kigawad, I don't know if it's a lucky thing or an unlucky thing, but we don't have any depressed areas. So most of the work that we do is focused on programs, lifestyle programs, or making, or programs that try to make the life of the people who live here easier. It's nothing too, nothing too deep when it comes to problems, nothing too... Hindi masyadong grabe 'yung mga problema nangyari dito. So, when it comes to enacting laws, it's nothing to, nothing that big of a deal. It's more of really just bringing down programs, such as wellness programs, lifestyle programs, sports programs, to keep the youth active and away from, you know, things, unwanted things, oh yeah.
So being a voice of the youth, how, how is it working with the older guys?
Um, yes.
The, the older senior?
Yes, so I guess it also helps that the senior citizens are very close to my heart. Um, in my campaign, in my seven, it's been seven, eight months, um, I've done a lot of activities with the seniors, making sure that they feel like they're not left out, just because, you know, just because I'm the youthful doesn't mean I don't care about every other sector in government. Um, although my focus is the youth, just because I'm part of it, I still have that thing that's close to my heart, which is the senior citizens. Kaya hindi pa rin mapapagiuwanan 'yung mga programa para sa mga citizens. Uh, and they've been receiving that pretty well. Um, medyo, whenever I have activities with senior citizens, they always tell me, "Parang apo na kita, you know, we want to support you just because kailangan may bata dyan." Uh, you know, there's this new generation, kailangan may gumagawa ng mga bagong programa." So yeah, I would say, it's nothing too, you know, negative when it comes to seniors.
One last?
Okay, go ahead.
You, you chose to be independent?
Yes.
Are you a jurist, or what, what prompted you to, to run as an independent candidate?
Um, so it's more of ano, it's more of the series of events, or the sequences of events that happened, that led me to running independent. I have friends in one party, I have friends in the other party. Um, I just, I guess I'm just not the type to want to dwell into that kind of drama in between the two groups. And I want to focus myself on my campaign and do things my way, so I ran independent.
But have you, have you done it in the past, being independent?
I've, yeah, the very first time I ran, I ran as Kigawad, I was independent.
Okay.
And I won as number one Kigawad.
So tested naman?
Yes. I think, ano lang yun, pasipagan lang yun, pagindependent ka. So, for the past seven, eight months, I've dedicated my life to this campaign. Every day, I've been visiting the barangays. With no fail, every day yun. Sabi ko after election na po ako matutulog. So, yun po, five weeks left, four and a half weeks left, and hopefully makaka-rest na tayo ng, you know, maayos.
Okay, so Chucky?
Yes?
Um, I live quite nearby. I'm from District 4, but I know quite a bit of the, um, politics arena in District 3. In District 3, you have a lot, uh, opponents who apparently have really goalful of the masses because they're really political clans.
Yes.
Um, the Goobais, Zizoms, Defensor, they're from this district.
Yeah.
You're an Antonio?
Yes.
I know that, I, I mean, you're from a very prominent family, but you haven't been quite heard a lot by, you know, the, the run of the mill?
That's true.
People on the street? I don't know, the, the process, processes that you've done in the past few weeks have been to generally direct our attention to those who doesn't, doesn't even know you?
Yeah.
In the first place. How would you be able to, you know, get to the, like, the grassroots or the people? Not in the bottom, but of course, um...
The people that are hard to reach?
Yeah.
The people who have no access to maybe internet or social media?
Yeah.
Or people who maybe are even apolitical? Who don't care about what's happening in the political landscape? So your question is, how do I reach them?
Yes.
I go to their houses. So I've pretty much been to 90% of the houses in District 3. And that's something that someone who's youthful and energetic and aggressive like me can bring to the table. I'm not afraid to go to every house, go to every depressed area, go to every corner of this district just to reach the people. And that's what I've been doing. Siguro that's why my name has been getting out there. If you, I don't know if you heard about any surveys, but you should try to check them. And I guess that's one thing that I'm very proud of, because I know that it came from my hard work. And that's something I plan to continue and really push for, because this is something I want, this is something I want to happen. And I'm not afraid to work for it. So, if I have to do this every day and go to every barangay every day, I will do it. So, that's what I've been doing. And hopefully it works, hopefully, you know, with, with God's help, we can do this. That's what I plan to do.
You're a very young guy, but you're not like the current elected officials. Are you associated with, or friends with?
Uh, good friends with.
Yeah, with some of the current councillors of Quezon City, or, or just in your district?
Well, sitting councillor, I mean, I'm friends with pretty much everyone on, as every sitting councillor right now. My family is, especially my parents, just because, you know, they're closer when it comes to age. Um, so they have the same, they have similar groups of friends. So yeah, I think everyone who's sitting right now in District 3, we're pretty close to, but it's like, me personally, uh, not so much. But I mean, we're family friends, so I guess.
Can you tell us like a, a glimpse of what District 3 actually means? You mentioned, um, healthcare, um...
Yes, so in terms of, when, when it comes to District 3, so I, I just want to, um, tell you that these problems come straight from the people. This is not something I made up, this is not something I'm guessing. These are problems that are directly coming from the people of the 37 barangays. So when it comes to health, it's the health centers, something that we have to strengthen. Also the public hospitals, something that we have to add budget for, especially when it comes to medical assistance. When it comes to education, it's free education for the youth. When it comes to employment, it's adding, it's getting the jobs of Quezon City and bringing them to the barangays, so that people from Quezon City can benefit from it, or get those jobs. So those are the three main things.
Are you planning to go, um, to the miles, or doing the same things? Like, for example, Makaki, Makaki has a pretty good grasp of their healthcare system.
Yes.
If you go into Osmac and you're a resident of, do you see that happening also with Quezon City? Since the city is pretty much like a rich city?
I would say, it could be a possibility. Of course, there would be a lot of things that would have to be accounted for, a lot of things have to be studied. But definitely, I think it's a possibility if all the right people come together and decide on it. Hopefully, I mean, who wouldn't want that, diba?
With being young, obviously being idealistic, so were there moments that you got disillusioned and how did you counter that?
Um...
Given the system, you know?
Well, we'll find out when I, if ever I win, uh, we'll find out how...
How does a young public servant, when you're young, when you get disappointed?
Or disheartened?
Disheartened?
Um... Well, I think that's something you can't do without, uh, it happens to everyone.
Just wondering where you get the drive?
Yeah, well, I think I just really get it from, it might sound cheesy, pero kasi I, I'm happy kasi when I'm able to make a difference in people's lives. When I see that I'm able to help someone, it makes me happy, it makes me feel fulfilled, and that's something I want to keep doing. Per, on my, in my personal capacity, I have limited resources, that's why I'm running for higher position. Because I want to get the reach, to be able to help other people, to more people, I mean. So, yeah, I think that's where I get my drive. Uh, so far, I enjoy it, I wanna keep doing it, and that's simply what it is.
You mentioned that your barangay, your district is much less compared to other districts?
Yes, I would say.
What's much difficult to deal with in reaching out to your constituents first?
What's, what's the hardest part about reaching out to them? I guess just because it's a more affluent community. Everyone, most of the people are living in subdivisions, so gated communities. So...
There's nothing created, duna?
It's not that, it's not naman that, uh, we have naman a lot of programs here. Pero, with regards to your question, it's harder to reach them just because they, they live very privately, okay? So, um, sometimes it's hard to get them out, to go out to the programs to be made, but at the same time, uh, most of the people who actually go are their maid, household, their drivers. So we make programs for them as well. Like, I made a sports league simply just for security guards and drivers and, and household and all that.
How participative 'yung mga yun, 'yung mga youth na yan, a private, very private?
When it comes to youth, they're participative naman, uh, when it comes to youth. Just because, uh, it's more of the older ones, the parents, kasi syempre, um, they have their own businesses, they have their own, you know, things that they do every day, very busy, so yeah.
Nakita namin 'yung practice nung ano, career mo, from SK to barangay sheriff. Are you planning to, talagang plan, plan mo yan, to enter and then to push through it hanggang president?
I don't know yet, don't see. Um, as far, as far as I know, as long as I enjoy it, I will do it. Um, and right now, I'm enjoying what I do, so I wanna push for it. Uh, when I started to run for SK, the reason was simply because I wanted to create a sports league, that's it, nothing else. When I ran for SK and I won, we tried doing it, and I enjoyed being active in the barangay. So sabi ko, even at 18 years old, which no one does, I ran as barangay Kigawad. I just wanted to try it, like what I'm doing now. I enjoyed it, so I continued it. And because I continued it, siguro because of my everydaying a house to house, I won naman number one. So when I, my first term, I continued the programs, I added more programs. I still enjoyed it, and until now, it's my third and last term. So, still doing it, going up for a higher position naman.
Yeah, Chucky? In the last election?
Yes.
Six of the councillors who are actually from District 3, multine from...
Multine? Multine from political...
The research.
Yes.
Two are from Lki, two are from Nationalista, and two are from another, I think?
Another party?
PRL.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Those are, uh, people that are backed by political parties. Um, when you ran independently, um, aren't you afraid of actually not getting enough support? Because you are not in a party?
Yes.
In a party system?
The straight answer to that is no. Um, if you're talking about being afraid, uh, that's not something I felt. Like I said earlier, I wanna push for it because I want to do it. If I lose, it's not for me. But as, to my capacity, as much as I can do with this, with regards to this campaign, if it's, kung usapan lang ng pasipagan, hindi tayo matatala dyan, kasi I will push for it as much as I can talaga. If at the end of it, it's not enough, I don't get enough support, it's okay. I mean, I tried my best. But, uh, as far as, um, when it comes to my capacity, my resources, and the help I'm getting, I'll push for as much as I can get, so.
Chucky, relation to, hi, by the way, I'm MJ.
Yes, I am.
But in relation to John's question, so is it something that you don't believe in the political system?
Definitely.
It's in the party system?
It's not that I don't believe, it's just by chance, this is what happened. Like you said, I'm a nobody, pretty much. Everyone who's running comes from a political family, families who've been there in Quezon City politics for the longest time. So why would the party take someone unknown over someone who's maskila lang, diba? So that's the point, um, it just happens that this is the situation, and there's nothing I can do about it. It's not that I don't believe in it. I didn't run independent just because, um, I wanted to say no to everyone else, it's not that. It's just that no one would take someone who's this young, then running, uh, from nowhere. So yeah, but I wanted to do it, so I ran independent.
You've proven your, your track record, and I'm sure after they've seen your, your performance, mayroon, mayroon ganun?
Hopefully.
Nangigaw for, for you to run for the party, um, siyusino 'yung mga parties?
Um, well, ah, pero, well, kasi you have to understand, I got back from Singapore in August of 2018. Uh, I took my international master's degree there, and I finished in August. As soon as I got back, the parties were already filled. So there were no other parties for me to go to. But it's something that I've been planning to do since like 2016, 2017, uh, when I really decided na I want to continue. So, di ako payak, I ran independent.
With or without a party?
Yeah, with or without the party, I mean, it's something I want to do, so.
Sorry, for District 3, no?
Yes.
How many, uh, no, many?
Councillors are running?
Are running?
Seventeen.
But only six?
Six, yes.
Positive chances for you?
I would say.
How supportive your family be?
Very supportive, grabe.
Kaya mo lang from your family na?
Yeah, very supportive.
Hindi ka manay ni stop ka na gumawa, pumunta sa higher position?
No, pero at first it was, ano eh, so when I got back nung August, from my, from Singapore nga, my parents and I talked about it, and they told me the same thing, na parang wala ka ng party pupuntahan, kasi they're full. Um, but if you want to do it, we'll support you. Pero 'yung request namin, umikot ka muna, see what the reception is. Visit the barangays, see what it's like, first of all, do you even really like it? Second of all, will people receive you positively? And I did. The very first barangay I went to was this woman's barangay, barangay Bagumbay. And, um, it was a good experience, so I did it again the next day. And it was a good experience again, and I kept doing it every day, until now. And now, we have a following. We just finished our unity walk last Sunday, where we had about 2,000, 3,000 people, maybe. Um, and I would say, if I keep going this way, we might actually do, might actually pull it off.
How about the unity walk that you mentioned?
Yes.
How do you feel the thousands of people who are there?
I almost cried, really. Uh, because when I started my, ano, my visitation, barangay visitation before, no one knew me. So I would say hi to someone, and they would, ini-ichupor lang ako. Uh, but at the same time, I took that as a challenge, so I just kept doing it, kept my smile on, kept shaking hands, kept making best for everyone. And, um, right now, it's, it's a different story now, so, like you said.
What do you think, 'yung, ano, 'yung edge mo dun sa other candidate, kung bakit mo vota kanila? Of course, you're running independent.
Um, well, I can share with you what people tell me. I don't wanna assume anything, pero I can only tell you what people tell me, which is, I show them a sense of sincerity when it comes to serving them, wanting to serve them. A sense of sincerity, hindi daw mabigat, uh, very light, ang dating ko sa kanila. And, um, the willingness, the aggression, siguro just because they see me all the time, nagsasawa ata sila sa mukha ko, every time I see them, they're like, nandito ka lang naman. So, diba, parang 'yung dating sa kanila, he must really want it. So siguro that's, um, the vibe that I give them, I would say, yeah.
Chucky, do you also read comments on your, on your social media?
I do. I handle my own social, my own Facebook page. Well, not anymore, just recently, two days ago, I got...
So you need a social media manager or?
So yeah.
So, ano ah?
I read comments, yes. Uh, so far, siguro in the span, in a span of seven months, I've only read like three hurtful comments. And, well, I expected it naman.
What are these comments?
Something along the lines of, ano, ano yun, uh, sa simula lang mo pa etyan, uh...
Hindi hurt? Sa social media lang?
They still get affected?
Okay.
They still get affected?
Sorry?
They still get affected by hate?
The very first one, I was affected, just because I guess I got used to all the positive comments. And I forgot that, you know, I'm in politics, it's bound to happen. Uh, I got affected for like 10 minutes, tapos, okay na. Then lead ko na.
What made you go back to the, to the chat?
Uh-huh, I don't know, I guess I just, at the, I do yoga then, kasi, before my campaign, I do yoga. I got, uh, my yoga started at 6:00, and I try to keep myself centered. So that's one of the things that keeps me grounded, na parang, I don't know if you guys have tried eh? Kasi after you do it, diba?
Yoga?
Try, you can try.
You just feel calm, you feel centered, is what it's called, and so, that's one of the things that keeps you going. Also, of course, also, uh, regular prayers, my family's support system, they help a lot. Uh, my team, very grateful for my team. Uh, it was a, a lot of challenges building the teams that I have now, pero I'm very happy with them, so.
Alam lang natin, Shuck, na, ano eh, ninyo madami 'yung politika. Ikaw personally, paano mo di-lidisin 'yung politika if you're a state, kung nandyan ka sa mukhasyo na yun?
Uh, I don't think cleaning the system is a job that one person can do, yeah. But definitely, it has to start with someone. And to my own capacity, if given the chance, I'm able to serve the city hall, the only thing I can really promise is to keep myself clean. That's how I started. And if I'm able to keep myself clean, and I'm, I'm able to show other people that it's possible to do that, and survive in the game of politics, I think a lot more people will, you know, I think it will gain traction, and a lot more people will... So yun, start with myself, that's the best thing.
Yung sa mga kalaban mo, may mga experiences ka na nainggit, or parang may threat, or parang may bash, na, 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 na nafikil ka eh? Kasi, parang sobrang bait mo, diba?
Well, I can only answer based on the things I hear.
Yes.
Of course, I don't know if they're true, pero, of course, it goes without saying, it's elections. I mean, simula pa lang, there was already one candidate that told me, okay, bigan tayo, pero alam mo naman, election to... I mean, the fact nung may ganun, diba, I should expect it na. Pero if it's something, say if pikunin ka sa politics, talo ka ta, talo ka gano'n, diba? So you just always have to keep a smile on your face and let it pass, kasi by May thirteen, by May fourteen, wala na 'yan eh, diba? So yeah, it's just about how many weeks of hell that you have to survive.
So how helpful is social media?
Sorry?
How's, how helpful?
I think it's very helpful, very helpful. Uh, a lot of times when I go to the barangays nowadays, they would say, I follow you on Facebook. Ganun, but it's mostly Facebook, talaga, yes. Hindi masyado Instagram, hindi masyado, just because. And it's nice, kasi whenever they take a picture with me, they always, I always tell them, oh, tag me on Facebook. So they always tag me, and I always see it, and it makes me happy, so...
Are you single?
I am single.
Wala bang mga napaparamdam na mga...
Meron ang, eh...
Are...
Meron naman.
How do you handle them?
No, I mean, I just, I just be nice to everyone again, that's, I mean...
What's a normal day for Chucky? Like, uh...
Uh, normal day?
Yoga.
Yoga?
Besides yoga, how, besides yoga, how do you, like, how do you depress?
Yeah.
With all those pressure?
Okay, so well, my normal day is, uh, yoga at six, campaign at eight, to eleven, and then lunch break. Lunch break at eleven, if there are any events to attend, I attended during the lunch break. Uh, and then, three thirty, we start house-to-house again. At the end of the house-to-house, around six thirty, we have a small caucus, we can talk to the people. Finish about seven, after seven, if there are any birthdays, um, uh, uh, lamay, or events to attend, we attended at night. And that's pretty much it, then repeat it the next day. So, so far, no more recreational stuff nun. Yeah, wala.
Um, I've been in Quezon City for years, but, um...
For years?
Um, of course, uh, sa Quezon City Hall?
Yes.
Hindi naman 'yung district where you miss a serve?
Yes, of course.
When you get there, everybody's...
The whole Quezon City?
Yeah, everybody's gonna ask for your help. What are your threats for those who are not in your district?
Make your whole city hall know.
I think, uh, generally, the three problems I mentioned to you is something that, uh, transcends across all districts. Uh, it's the same problem, uh, if not slightly different, but it's generally the same, health, education, employment. It's because, uh, I've visited the other districts, and most of the depressed areas are exactly the same as my district. And that's, the depressed areas are the majority when it comes to the number of people. And we're trying to serve as much as we can the majority first, and then everything else afterwards.
Do you know like the status of each barangay right now?
In my district?
Yeah, who's like the poorest and who's like the richest?
Uh, I wouldn't say poorest and richest, I would, that's, I would say more of, ano, uh, the barangays that need more attention are the big, are the bigger ones, the really big ones. Because life there is different from what we have here.
Life there's poor, boss.
It's different, it's different, so it needs more attention, uh, it needs more programs from the government, needs more help from the government. Um, and I guess that's, those are the barangays I would focus on more.
Chucky, you're, you're running for independent, what are your, what's your political nomination?
International scope, that's what your question is?
What do you mean?
Part, political part?
Um, my certificate of nomination was actually from Partidin Masan Pilipino. Yes. Yes, they sponsored my corner, but I'm the only one running here, so it's pretty much like I'm independent. The reason for that is because we need, uh, a political party for us to get watchers for election.
Sorry for the question, but is it missing with your funds to first?
No, I don't get support from them.
So this is all personal? So I guess the question is for people, or like young bloods, like who want to start, you know, in show, in much of this?
In politics, but they're not really, you know, wala sila masyadong access for funds, or what can you say, what can you say about?
Uh, I would say that if it's something that you want to do, it's something that you have to try doing. Because, uh, there was a point in time wherein I was on, I was in a crossroads, wherein, if I should run or not. And that was the time I got back, and I found out that there was no party that I could join. Um, during this time, I told myself that if I don't try it, today, this year, this election, I will regret it for the rest of my life. It will always be at the back of my head knowing that I had, I could have done it during a time wherein four of the incumbents were graduating. But I didn't do it, and it will haunt me forever.
In case you can't make it, are you planning to run again for the second?
We'll see, but if I don't make it, I'll focus on my business first. Yeah, because, uh, I'll take that as a small sign from God that I should focus on my private life first.
Love levels?
Yeah, maybe.
Run against the, like, the barangay captain of your...
No, uh, we're, we're friends, I mean, we came in at the same time, we have the same beliefs. So there's no use running against each other.
Yeah, I guess, with, with Alan's question, yung politics, kasi isn't exactly, uh, it definitely isn't really exactly lang about your, your track record, what you do. It's also about your reputation. So I guess the question related to the Alan's questions are, like, how much of your personal life are you willing to share?
Um, I'm pretty open, so whatever it is, I mean, I'm willing to share it, nothing to hide naman.
You were talking about your personal life, and we see that you're, you have a very basic schedule.
Yes.
So do you have time for...
Not now.
About dating or...
Not now. Maybe after elections.
Cause you're young, you know?
Yes, definitely after elections, for sure.
Have you had girlfriends before?
Yes.
What do you think failed in your relationship? How have you improved?
Yeah, well, I did say... I did say I was willing to share, so I was... Ang bilis naman naman.
So personal naman?
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Ang bilis na puta.
Okay, pass up na 'yun, close.
But no, I only, what, what do you think?
Well, to be honest, it's, it's been a while, it's been a while since I, since my last relationship. And during those times, I was very young, I mean, I'm twenty-six now. Here in my last relationship, I was twenty-two, twenty-three, maybe, uh, I didn't do the math, so twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, and during those times, you know, we're very young, uh, we always think that there's something better. Or we don't communicate well with each other.
So you don't settle?
Yeah, nagpapadala tayo mga shadows, mga stuff.
Feelings.
So, yeah, feelings, and we do a lot of things that, when we look back on now, seems very mature. So I guess a mixture of things, it's not one specific thing, but it's a mixture of things that, you know, that make those past relationships work. And I also believe that probably it's because I haven't met the right one, so...
Pero masyadong mataas ang standard mo?
Hindi naman, I'm not, I don't have very high standard, I, I just really want someone who will, I can be, I can consider as a partner for life. That's what I'm looking for, I'm not very young.
Question, you're very young, well, well versed, you're very, uh, ano, familiar katta with, with, you know, the laws and constitution, for example. So your, your job for being a councillor is legislative, in, in nature, yes. So do you agree, ganun lang 'yung ano natin, a requirements for, that must be able to read and write, do you think you should require...
Oh, you mean, uh, requirements for running?
Yes.
I would say that is okay, to be honest, I would say that is okay. Because for me, service, uh, to the people starts from, ano eh, your willingness to do so. So if you have the heart for serving the people, um, I would really think that would be enough.
Even for example, it's okay lang to be...
Uh, I don't know about higher positions, so that's a different...
But what do you, what what do you think?
But for my, for my own, for my own personal, um, opinion?
Yeah.
It would be okay, it would be okay, but you would need a lot of help, you'd need a lot of help. Uh, for a lot of other people, maybe not, but for me, I really think that if you have the heart to serve, you should be given the chance to serve. If the people don't want you, then they don't want you. But the, the point there is, you have the chance to do so. So as long as you do things right, maganda pinakita mo, marami kang natulungan, what else is there, diba? That's the whole point.
Ano 'yung ano, sisigal na, nileres request na post-statement mo, ano 'yung absurd?
Absurd? Uh, reasonable would be the things I mentioned previous about the health centers. Because first of all, really, I really think the health centers, kailangan palakasin, that's the first line of defense.
Meron din ba sa barangay niyo naman, living two day?
Not in my barangay, pero I've supported a few.
Some were...
No, just the other day, I supported, um, yeah, just the other, uh, last week ata, I supported an Operation Toolit in one of the barangays. Um, of, it is a program of the Kagawad, so I just supported it, but yeah, it happens. Um, when it comes to absurd, uh, requests, usually it's, ano eh, parang people who think that the government can solve all their problems, so... But it's rare naman, it's rare naman, so... Mostly naman realistic 'yung mga hinihinga sa akin.
How did you do with absurd?
Uh, I, I try my best to explain that this is your situation, this is what the government can do for you, if ever. And usually naman, they get it, I think it depends on how you explain it.
Chucky, ano, major showbiz, ano, major showbiz na natin.
Sorry, batana kasi, ano, who will be that interest?
Yes, yes.
Yung nagresearch kami ng Facebook mo, parang napag-usapan namin, nag major kahawig, may nagsabi na rin magkahawig mo si Edward, Edward Barber?
Barber?
Um... That's a first for me, the Edward Barber is a first for me. Um, usually what they tell me is Miguel Tan Felix.
Ah, marami, marami.
Marami, as in, marami.
Sino, sino, may mga sinasabi nila?
As in, as in, every time I go down dun sa barangay, someone tells me that.
Miguel Tan Felix, lasa haya?
I don't know. Siguro, I don't... None of this.
So you have to research the Q and A, at least Edward Barber is.
Yes, I will.
Please invite them na na, to support you.
Yeah, well, uh, for anyone who's watching...
Ask them to vote for you?
Yeah, well, I would say, for anyone who's watching, um, I would kindly ask for your support in this campaign of mine. Um, if you believe in the things that I have mentioned, and if you, if you believe that there should be someone representing the youth in Quezon City Council, I kindly ask that you vote for me. Um, if you don't, it's okay, but, um, I'm, I'm trying to show the people who I am, trying, trying to show the people what I can do or what I plan to do, and if that's enough, I would kindly ask for your support. So, thank you very much.